All right, I'll call to order this meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee for Monday, March 7th, 2022. Just to let the audience and committee know that this meeting is being recorded and we'll do the roll call. I don't believe we have Dave. Jess?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lisa.
Yes.
Mike, I don't see. Randy? Susan? Tom?
Here.
And I'm here as well. Our next meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, March 21st. First up, we have the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, council payable warrants, payroll warrants, and two donations, one from the Townsend Ashby Youth Soccer Association and the other from Shutterfly.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I only heard Tom, so who made the motion? I'll second it.
Uh, Tom, Lisa.
All right, thank you. All right, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have public communications. We had two people submit for public comment. Just a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes and may ask that you stay on topic and address comments through the chair. So first up, we have Patrick McPhee, community member from Ashby, who would like to say a few words about the budget. I think I just need to allow to talk. All right, Pat, I think we can hear you.
Hi, thanks. Um, I want to thank, um, you know, you guys put a lot of effort in in November, December, and also January, I believe, working on the summit budgets.
Sorry, Pat, real quick, could you just give your name and address for the record?
Hi, yeah, Patrick McPhee, I'm C P H E E. I'm at Haywood Road, Ashby, Mass.
Good? Thank you.
Okay, so I know you guys spent a lot of time working with the communities and we knew last year there was going to be a major budget increase this year. Because we were drawing on your funds again last year and, you know, my concern was is doing it again is more of a problem. I mean, everybody committed last year that we would have an increase. Unfortunately, we also knew last year we were going to have a lot of housing development in Ashby, so we knew we were going to get an increase on that also. Yes, the budget is going to hurt us this year. It's definitely going to hurt us, but the kids do come first. One of the problems I am having is you guys should be having more counselors, one counselor per classroom like other school districts, not one counselor per school itself. If I was handling a child advocacy for a child, I would be challenging that right away. So I would pretty much pay attention that most school systems are doing one per classroom right now. And that's something we should be looking at also because if we don't invest now in fixing the problem of the pandemic, we're going to be investing later on hiring very extensive counselors and nurses to be within the classrooms themselves. So we have to look at it now as Chad Atkins said, I mean, as Songa said at a school board meeting, I was at fun. We invest now or we invest later, but we have to invest. And so the best thing is to invest now. And that's what I'm saying. And that's how I'm looking at it. So I know, yes, we're going to take a hit, but we have to. We knew it, a lot of communities, including Ashby, Townsend, Townsend said the same thing, the Finance Committee, we knew it was going to happen this year. A lot of communities got funding from the states. If they balanced it right, they could have been ready for this. Some of my, I know Pepo is ready for it. Unfortunately, you know, and so that's going to hurt us. The other thing that's going to hurt Ashby is moving the kids out of Ashby for the special ed over to Pepo is going to be more that we're not going to get funding for our school building anymore from the other communities, and we're also going to be paying for the transportation to the other locations, and that's going to hurt us also. I wish we had been informed of some of this until these last few minutes, these last weeks. I wish that there was information provided. Unfortunately, I'm not on the committee, so I couldn't raise it throughout the period of time. But what I do know is that dealing with other school districts, we need to take a closer look. You should be putting more than three special ed councils on. Other school districts are doing one per classroom to make sure that they have, they don't have to invest in a counselor and a nurse for every single classroom. I would hate to be the one that if it's not invested now, if somebody challenges that you would have one special ed person assigned to that student in the classroom. And that's going to be a lot more money. So let's look at that. Now, I don't know if you were able to find out if there's grants out there like the other communities are getting. That would be a very good question. I would like to answer by the board if they were able to find that out. I know some of those have. I know Low, Reading, Johnson, all got it. So I'd like to hear how we, if we're getting any of those funds also. That's all I have to say. I mean, I understand what they, kids are more important, so I'm for this. Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Pat. Next, we've got a Mr. Kevin Stetson, sorry, a community member from Ashby who would also like to speak about the budget.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How are you this evening? I just got a couple of questions. Kevin Stetson, Churchill Drive, Ashby, Mass. Just have a couple, a couple of questions. So the budget, I kind of caught about 15 minutes, 30 minutes of last week's meeting. And as we're on the topic of five new, I guess fiscal plan, we'll call them, people with the amount of possibly $300,000 between wages and benefits. I didn't stay on for the rest of the meeting, but I'm wondering if one, that passed. And more concern over the years on the Finance Committee of Ashby, we've always gone back and forth with this, and this is probably one of the bigger, this is half of Ashby's budget, as it typically is, and Ms. Haynes knows this very well. But I'd like to know, out of the $53 million budget, I don't know what Ashby's percentage is on this budget. I know that last year's or this year's fiscal budget, our assessment is 3.2 million. Transportation is 341,000 and debt services was 455. We've got a lot of things that are going on financially within the town, and I'm just wondering how much Ashby's contribution to the 53 million is. And one final question I'd like to know, if at all possible, how many buildings are still in repair or in need of repair? A couple of years back, there was, I think, four buildings that needed roofs, windows, and doors as well as HVAC. So I'm wondering, where do we stand with that? So thank you very much for taking my questions.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate that. Not to, so I wrote down these questions. What what we can do is, and I actually think the budget's probably our next item. After a couple of information items, we'll circle back to those questions because I think that's relevant to the discussion this evening. So thank you to our public speakers. Appreciate your participation. Moving on to reports, Chairperson's report, I don't have much other than just to thank everybody who's been part of the budget discussions over the last number of, well, number of months, but more importantly, the ones that have been the last few weeks. We've been having budget summits, Finance Committee meetings, School Committee meetings, the public hearing. We had a joint meeting with the towns and tonight's meeting as well. So I know the committee, the administration, community members, and folks from various town boards and committees have put in a lot of time and thought and effort into the budget discussion. So I certainly appreciate that. I know this is not an easy time of year ever. But I appreciate everybody's diligence and asking questions, wanting to be informed, curious about different aspects of the budget and trying to learn as we go. So appreciate that. Next up, we have the Students' Representative Report. I don't know, Robin, do you see?
I don't see the student on.
I don't see.
Right, then we will move on to Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Morgan?
And I too don't have a report other than my comments and report on the budget when that comes.
Right. Have a feeling the speed of the meeting will soon be paid back. So moving on to our, we don't have any old business and any new businesses under our committee reports, so Lisa, I don't believe you have anything from Accelerated Repair of the maybe answer of Mr. Stetson's question?
Yes, go ahead and answer Mr. Stetson's question, or do you want me to answer it?
Yeah, if you don't mind. You were involved.
The windows and rooftops were repaired at Barnum Brook and Ashby, or not Ashby, Barnum Brook, Hawthorne Brook, and Squanah Cook. All of those repairs have been done. The project has not been closed out as of yet, but everything's been done. Does that answer your questions? Does that cover the questions?
Yeah, I think there was also a question, how many are still in need of repair, if there were any that may not have been included in those projects?
Okay, Ashby is in need of repair. Yes, and but Nissitis and Hawthorne Brook needs
Hawthorne Brook needs some classroom work.
Classroom, yeah. Upgrades in Hawthorne Brook.
We're also looking, can I?
Yep, you go ahead, Nancy.
We're also looking at HVAC, like a study of the UNIVAC systems at Spalding this year.
And Nissitis is on the list to get a UNIVAC or HVAC look at this year or next year.
And I think that'll be combined with the roof study.
All right. I think that covers his questions.
Yeah. Kevin, I'll let you, you had a quick comment or follow up on that.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Just real quick, as far as Ashby, what is in need of repair? Because we started off with three buildings having their roofs redone. I don't know if Ashby was in that line there of needing a roof being done. And that's my question. I know that several years back, we had windows, doors, and the roof done to Ashby Elementary. That was probably going back maybe, I don't know, eight years now?
I think it was late 90s. Am I right, Nancy?
Uh, the roof, we had an accelerated, well, it wasn't called that at the time, roof and window project at Ashby, 2012, I believe.
I was on the Finance Committee back then, yeah. So, yeah. So what is, what is in need of repair at the Ashby Elementary now?
So there's, with regard to Ashby, something that we're looking at and we have been looking at is the demolition of the old wing, which also has to be abated. Something that we do have to be careful of with any work that we do at Ashby is that we do have to be careful that we do not put ourselves in a situation where once you reach a certain threshold based on the value of the building, you may have to bring the entire building up to code, which would be so costly, it would likely go above the actual value of the building, which would basically put everything off because we wouldn't receive the funding to do it. We wouldn't receive state approval to do it. It could not be an MSBA project, so to speak. And then we'd be in a situation where we may not be able to make repairs because once you get on that road and it reaches a certain threshold, the whole building has to be brought up to code. And right now, we have handicap accessibility issues. We have stair issues in the building that are not up to code. We have hallways that are not up to code, ceilings that are not up to code, and bathrooms that are not up to code, and I would imagine electricity would fall in line with that as well. So we are working on that. We do have, you know, we do have a facility study being done in the district. But again, we have to be cautious with anything that we do to Ashby because it could put us out of any it may, we may not qualify for any help from the state if we go in the direction that we need to go in with regard to just the demolition and abatement of the wing and some other work that needs to be done, may again institute or constitute, I should say, bringing the entire building up to code, which would likely, again, go above the value of the building, which would, which would not be good.
Uh, Mr. Morgan, real, real quick, and then I'll leave it at this. Does the North Middlesex School District still rent Ashby Elementary for a dollar a year?
We lease it, Nancy. Do you know what the amount is?
Sorry, we said, yes, lease, yes.
At the moment, we're in, we need to update the lease agreement, so that's on, something that's on on the schedule to do.
Is it still a dollar, Nancy?
Um, typically, that's how they're set up.
Okay, but I mean, the residents of Ashby are going to be on the hook for all of these repairs.
If, if we cannot get a project approved.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the tear down of the wing.
Uh, well, again, it may go beyond that because, you know, it's not just the tear down of the wing. We do have a pretty detailed list of items that need to be addressed in Ashby. And again, once, if, once you get on that road, and I was not, you know, just in working with people and talking with people, once we get on that road, you have to bring everything up to code in the building. If you, if we go beyond the demolition and abatement of that wing, which there are other items in the building that need to be addressed as well. But we would, in essence, be handcuffing ourselves to going, to bringing everything up to code, which would be very costly and that would likely fall on the residents.
I'm going to
We're moving out of the scope.
Yeah, I'm going to move on. If there's further questions on capital project repairs, then we do have upcoming Finance Committee meetings where that can be discussed and we will, we'll take that up. We're getting beyond the scope of the share, but I appreciate the questions and certainly you can send us emails too if you've got specifics.
Yeah, so I have one other question, but I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it for this evening, but I do thank you for the amount of time.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it, Kevin. Thank you. Lisa, do you have anything else on the Accelerated Repair update?
No, we are good.
Perfect, thank you. I see that Charlie has joined. If we want to go back, if there's a student report for this evening, we can go back to Mr. DeJardin. That's how you say it. There we go. Awesome.
Hi, hello, can everyone hear me? Is this good? All right.
Yes, fantastic.
All right, great. So let's see. So, um, I have, I have one big thing to report on, and that is basically that this weekend, we are having our first indoor dance in over two years at the high school. It's going to be great. It's our spring fling. Tickets are on sale right now. It's going to be a great night. I believe the theme is Enchanted Forest or something. I apologize, I'm not really in on that. But, um, that's our major thing that's happening right now. And personally, for our class office, for the class, the junior class, we have lots of exciting things coming down the pipeline, like we are planning a mental health walk in May that would support mental health charities, and it'll be like a walkathon format. So that's a really exciting thing that we're working on. And, um, if I have any more updates, I will share it next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Finance Committee, Lisa.
Okay, we did have a meeting and we did approve a budget to bring forward to the committee, and I believe I'm going to hand it over to Brad and Nancy to discuss a few things first. And then I think Randy has some comments on some research that she has done with the state as well. So Brad and Nancy, I'll let you guys go first.
Sure, thank you, Lisa. So I'll just give just a quick overview of the budget and really the questions around the additional staff that have been added to the budget. So at this point in time, if we include the debt service, the increase of the FY '23 budget is 2.38% above the FY '22 budget. And again, that is including the debt service. And really, all the questions that have come up have been around the increase in staff. And what we did was we did kind of a deep dive into the additions as well as some of the reductions, and we came up with what really is a pretty accurate FTE increase from FY '22 to FY '23. I do want to point out that generally speaking, you know, the increase doesn't always match the net increase. So when we're asking for additions, the budget narrative also has reductions. So what I'm going to explain are that we have some additions, we have some reductions, and then we have a net increase. So if you look at the budget as a whole, we are asking for the addition of 8.2 FTE. And I'll go over those momentarily. We are asking for a reduction of 4.94 FTE resulting in a total FTE increase in FY '23 of 3.26, which is in essence, right around the $200,000 mark. So again, just wanted to go over that. The additions would include an Assistant Director of Facilities and Grounds, and I just want to explain, I'm going to give you the position and the rationale for why we're asking for it. We do need to establish a second position to assist when the director is unavailable and cannot currently accomplish that through the stipend, which is currently in place. Although it's coming in at a salary of $85,000, it really is an increase of $59,000 because there's a form and stipend, and there would also be a savings in this person's position when we replace that person, most likely. We're asking for a district-wide maintenance person. We are in desperate need of some assistance with our facilities and grounds. It's something that the current staff cannot do, and it is causing a good amount of overtime. We are asking for a, for $75,000, which I'm going to call contingency money for an additional elementary teacher. Something that could possibly happen at the Ashby Elementary or the Spalding Memorial. Again, this is based on class sizes. We have experienced for the past several years, a significant number of students that move in. Oftentimes due to a fostering or DCF placement, and we've also seen a shift in homeschooling. Due to COVID, our numbers more than doubled. They've since dropped a little bit, but there's still a higher number of students being homeschooled, and if those students come back into the district, we have to make sure that our class sizes are manageable. We've asked for two stu, for two student supervisor positions in the district. Those are $35,000 apiece. We are in desperate need of lunchroom coverage, morning and afternoon supervision in both of those buildings. Essentially, we cannot find, like the elementary schools have lunchroom aides. We cannot find aides at the middle school level. It is not something that people have been applying for. We've had them posted for several years. We do not get help with that. So what has happened is, is our middle school principal and assistant principal, in essence, spend the entire lunch wave or all four lunch waves in the cafeteria. They're unable to be in classrooms, unable to be dealing with issues that come up during the school day. So we are asking for that. And they can also be there to help fill, fill in for teachers to attend special education meetings, fill in for a teacher if a teacher has to leave for an emergency and there's no sub available. So it really is, it's something that we have in place at the high school, and it's really, it's been a great position there, and we think it would serve many dividends at the, at the middle school level. We're asking for an additional technology technician. Since COVID hit, we've essentially become a one-to-one school district, and our devices have more than doubled in the district, yet our staffing has not. So the need for a technology technician to be able to keep up with the maintenance of those devices is extremely important. Asking for an additional certified nursing assistant for our sub-separate special education programs as well as the increase in workload due to COVID-19, which hopefully will kind of shift away now, but again, there's no guarantee. We're asking for an additional therapeutic learning teacher. That is a class size mandate that we have to follow based on student IEPs and state guidelines. So that is the position that we would actually have to put into place based on our current number projections. And then we're asking for two additional counselors at Barnum Brook and Spalding Memorial to assist with the additional student social emotional needs. So that comes out to an 8.2 increase for reductions. We've had a reduction in high school world language. We were unable to fill the American Sign Language teacher. We did not have to fill a special education vacancy that was there. We've had some specialist reductions at the elementary level of 0.8. We've had a very slight decrease in speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. We've had two team reductions at the middle schools, one at each, so a 2.0 there. A slight decrease in adaptive PE. We've had a decrease in gateway staff. And we've also had a slight decrease just in general positions across the district of 0.2 FTE. So this works out to a four, a reduction of 4.94 and a total increase in FY '23 of 3.26 over the FY '22 budget, again, approximately $200,000. If we do not add those positions, we would likely be moving forward with a level funded budget minus the collective bargaining agreements that we've agreed to, but the staffing would essentially remain the same. Again, we do shift positions based on need, and those are generally described in the narrative, but as of right now, we're at a 3.26% increase. So just wanted to point that out. I think what's very important at this point in time is that I would encourage the committee to pass this budget because we do have a good amount of time between now and town meeting to make adjustments. You know, certainly right now, if we come in higher, we can always go lower, but we can't go higher. So to me, there's really not, is it would not be detrimental to pass this tonight, for the committee to pass this, because again, we can reduce. We just can't add to it. So I just want to point that out there. And in the meantime, I think what's very important is that we hear from each of the towns to find out what exactly they need their number to be at. What is the number as far as an increase that each town could afford? Again, there's, there's no guarantee that we could get there. There's a possibility that we would have to make significant cuts to the district. But right now, a 2.38% increase and an increase in 3.26 staff in a district that has well over 400 staff members. Again, we just have needs that we're trying to, we're trying to meet. We're trying to do what's best for kids, but also I know not all of these positions directly relate to kids, but they do relate to the health of the district and maintaining the district, whether it be in education for students or our facilities. So that's all I have at this point. Nancy Haynes or Nancy Milligan, if you'd like to add something, please feel free to do so.
All right, Nancy or Nancy, any comments?
Mr. Hanson, I did share with the committee that document. I just, I just went over. It's shared via Google. We just finished it this evening, so just wanted to let, let the committee know that, that it is out there and easy for you to view.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the committee, just one other comment. So the committee does have, I did four copies of letters that were sent from Pepperell, Townsend, and Ashby. I think the consistent message in all three was to find ways to reduce the burden on the towns and use more E and B was the, was the common thread in there. So we can talk more about that as, as the topic goes on, but you all should have copies of those as well.
Randy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I was just trying to raise my hand. Um.
So in um, the finance of committee, we had uh, I had thrown out a uh, far-fetched kind of. Idea of trying to. Do a rolling average, uh, because at that point we were looking at really trying to help Ashby with their twelve percent increase. Um, which they had an influx of students and that was, you know, above and beyond what Townsend and Pepperell's increases were. Um, if we had done a five-year rolling average, which is something that we're looking at anyway for the regional agreement. Uh, update that we just don't have the whole thing completed. Um, I had contacted uh, DESE, Christine Lynch. Um, to ask what the possibility of of all three towns agreed and we would have to have unanimous uh, agreement. To using a five-year rolling average for the October one enrollments uh, in order to. Um, go forward with this. Uh, there are a number of stumbling blocks um, in this process, um, being that. Um, any change to our regional agreement as it is now. Constitutes an amendment. Any amendment to the regional agreement. Then kicks off the entire process of having to get it approved by the commissioner. And then going to the three towns um, for approval. So Christine also let me know that because our original agreement is really, really out of date. As we even mentioned, the nineteen ninety's will be uh, Ed reform act. Um. There's a chance that they won't approve. Just the rolling average right now because they would want the whole document to be brought up to speed. Um, she says it might be possible if we make mention of the Ed reform with the rolling average. That they might approve that on the contingency that we do the rest of it within a year. Um, so that is something, if the committee thinks that we can go forward or want to try and go forward with this, I can certainly. Put something together to send off to uh, Christine Lynch, see if we can get approval. The next doubling block is having to have all three towns at a town meeting approve. Uh, this and trying to do that concurrently with their budget. Really kind of has some. Strange and I'm not sure how we would do it um, consequences because if one town does not approve it. Then we can't go through with that, which means the budget that we have. Um, put forth at that point in time that would use a five-year rolling average is no good. Um, I'm not sure if we can have a contingency budget and vote two women. Um, but you know, based on that, if we don't, if the budget gets shut down because the amendment got shut down. Then the towns have to hold another meeting and that's an expense to the towns. I'm not sure we'd want to. Um, chance having to go down that road. Um, so unfortunately. My opinion is I don't think this is something that's really feasible, but if the school committee feels that it's something that they would like to explore, I certainly would. Uh, go down the first step with Christine Lynch and try and get the amendment approved by the commissioner in order to bring it to the towns.
Randy, can you, uh, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but I I was under the impression that it took a. A fiscal year for any amendments to take effect or could do amendments take effect immediately? I thought you had, they didn't take effect till after.
Generally don't. Christine Lynch says that that she can try and help us through if it can get approved that we can have it uh, for this budget.
Okay.
Uh, but again, trying to approve the budget at the same time is. Very difficult, uh, again, because if we don't have all the votes. Um, it may end up being another town meeting for all the towns to approve the next budget.
Any thoughts from the committee?
Again, there's no, no guarantee that they're going to approve it because our regional agreement needs a lot of updates.
Seen any comments, but I mean, I guess my feedback. I agree. I think it would be a lot because you'd be talking about explaining this amendment to regional agreement. And then potentially discussing two different budgets, um, or at least two different budget amounts. Uh, which could get overwhelming and confusing for folks. Uh, I wonder if it's worth. Pursuing the change. But pursuing that change as it means to help us next year and and for future years. So try to get that amendment through and and. Overcome the fact that our agreement is. Typed up.
Yeah, we would have a little bit more time. I can, I could bring this up to the fall uh, town meetings. It doesn't have to be a spring town meeting. Um, which is generally uh, with regional agreements, a better meeting to. To bring it to because there's less going on in the budget and you can concentrate on all the changes that are going to be happening in it. Um, and in that that case, we would bring all of the changes that we're looking for uh, at that same time. But the five-year rolling average was on the list of things that we were looking at changing.
I would fully support that if if that's an option to go to the fall. June?
I agree, um, as much as I would love to see this happen now. I think tying it in at the the spring meeting. With the budget and having all the numbers that it really kind of. It would, it would flip the budget numbers for different towns. And I think when somebody would see their number. Going in a direction they wouldn't want, they would vote against it. And that's not going to help us in the long run. Um, I think we do definitely need to do this. Um, but really put the time in and do it right. If we could bring it to the towns to the fall. Uh, I'd like to see that happen so that we're not in the same type of situation next year.
That it might be good to to to. Get that support in almost sponsorship from the towns as part of this process. Because it will positively impact a town or two and it will negatively impact a town or two. Uh, at least in the short term. So it it would be good to have their support throughout that process and to give us that time. Till fall town meeting to. To have them be part of it. Do the due diligence, have the meetings, conversations, et cetera, and have them be supportive vocally about it, I think will be very helpful for us. All right, um. Any other comments on that? Otherwise, Randy, I think you're good to pursue that for. For fall now, and that would just be um. Through the policy subcommittee, correct? So if people wanted to.
Yes, policy um, now has regional agreement underneath it. Um, so I I will. Uh, definitely advertise on the agenda that it's going to be regional agreement because we're not going to do policy at the same time of at those meetings. Because there's a lot to the regional agreement.
Makes sense.
And we'll also be trying to involve some of the community once we get it to a certain place uh, and try and get some community feedback before it goes to the DESE.
Randy, do you have anything else or was that the?
That was all on on that uh, on that part.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we're ready to move on to other other things for the budget.
I think we're ready to move on to other things in the budget. To let it, let the discussion begin. So the finance committee did approve the budget and is bringing that forward. To you guys, I think you have the information in front of you. Um, I mean.
Do we want to, and I can read it at least if you don't have it right in front of you. Do we want to make the motion and then have discussion and?
Sure. You want me to make the motion?
Yeah, if you want, if you've got it in front of you.
Yeah, um, I move that the school committee adopt an operational budget for FY twenty-twenty-three. Of fifty-three million, two hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. A FY twenty, twenty-twenty-three transportation budget of three million. Nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine. And FY twenty-twenty-three debt service of three million, nine hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-two. And to use the funds to calculate FY twenty-twenty-three school assessments for member towns as required by statute. In addition, the committee authorizes the use of two million and forty-five thousand. From the excess and deficiency account to offset the FY twenty-twenty-three operational budget.
Have a second?
Second.
All right, listen, Tom. All right, so we will discuss the budget. Um. And just going back, I know um. There was a question during public comment, if if anybody has that answer in terms of the, out of the fifty-three million, what is Ashby's? Contribution uh, might be good just to. Review the town contributions. I don't know, Nancy, if we can defer to you on that or. Anybody else has that handy?
Oh, this uh, this budget, if it was voted, would be um, on average for all member towns, a local contribution would be. Five point six percent. Ashby's portion would be a twelve point five-six percent increase. Pepperell's a four point four seven and Townsend's a four point nine seven. Uh, the major changes from the budget hearing that we um. Saw in this budget is is a major change in the debt service and that um. That more recent borrowing we did in February resulted in. And the way that we needed to handle the bond premium resulted in lower debt assessments, which is good news. Um, it necessitate some other changes to kind of keep us in line with where we were. And then uh, that, those were um. Get that in front of me. And those changes included um, moving some funding to the circuit breaker. So our, we use the circuit breaker fund for our tuitions. And we made an investment to that. We also checked in school choice. Um, assessment and the charter school assessment matched the governor's proposal. And we had a change in some of the numbering sequence for the debt service. We used to. We would previously been keeping any short-term borrowing principal payments. Um, in the fifty-four fifty section and we moved those to where they're suggesting, which um. It it feels a little weird, but I I guess I understand the logic through the purchase of land and building sites and land and buildings. Those um, big fifths are just moving from one uh, category to another. So it's a little confusing. Um, I went through virtually all positions just to make sure I had. What was the most recent updated um, positions to make sure everyone was accounted for and made a few adjustments related to that. Um, we moved a um, student position to a teacher position, shifted paraprofessionals a little bit. Um, accommodate that. But this is, those were the major changes from the last conversation we had about this.
Thank you, Nancy. Any committee members, questions, comments on the, the budget, Randy?
Um, yes, even though I was on the uh, finance subcommittee and I did support uh, bringing this budget forward. Uh, the letters from the towns uh, came in after we made our um. Recommendation uh, at our meeting and reading um, that. Townsend, which I was not fully aware that they could not afford this budget. I knew we had an issue with Ashby and we're trying to figure out how to help them. Um, I would like to recommend that this goes back to the policy subcommittee that we can go and take a look um, for anything, do a deep dive. Is uh, is there any COVID costs that we missed that can be taken out? Is there any? Anything else that we can do um, to try and get this back in line because uh, I I I'm not really sure about. Even uh, passing a budget at this level and saying we'll we'll reduce it later when we know that two towns. Aren't going to support it. Um. It 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 kind of doesn't make any sense to me uh, to pass anything at this point that we know two towns won't support. So I'd like to, I think we have another week uh, that we can take uh, to um, approve a budget.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, June?
Um, thank you, Randy. I'd like to to second that thought that we revisit this. Um, and I believe Pepperell's letter said that they were short about seven hundred and twenty thousand as well. So. I know there was a lot of focus on Ashby because of the huge increase, but. All three towns are certainly feeling this crunch, although it's not. You know, it it's a relatively level budget. It's still. It's still too much for the towns this year and I think we need to listen. Um. It's, it's really nice to see the towns working together and going to the state and trying to come up with some. Um, some more funding for us and trying to work with us. That's been a wonderful benefit that's come out of it. And I hope that that continues and that perhaps next year we might not be in this situation due to some of those efforts. But right now, you know, they're, they're asking us, they've been begging us to to do something. And this budget really isn't different than what we saw a month ago. Um, Ashby's changed by a thousand dollars and Pepperell and Townsend each changed by four thousand dollars, which is nothing in the grand scheme of things. Um, I do think we have an opportunity to use more E and D. If you look back, um, like at what we've used in the past. We've, we've kind of held on to about a million or so in the past. And if we did that again. We could use another like six hundred thousand. This year and still keep over a million aside. So, and I'm. You know, that it's. I I know it's important to hold on to the E and D to a point, but it is extra. It's what we over budgeted. That taxpayers gave us money for that we said, oh, we didn't actually need it. We're just going to hold it now. And here they are asking for that money to be used toward toward the budget. I think we should be listening to them. Um, so um, one other just side note that I wanted to make because I know we had the budget forums through the year, which has been awesome. It's been great. To see the participation from our member towns in that. Um, but I don't think even with the the um. The home sales and stuff, I don't think people realized what a fluctuation we were looking at this year. Um, but since we use the numbers from October first, we probably could have given the towns a head up, heads up a little sooner. Than February or March, what the percentages might change. So um, that's something to keep in mind for for next year anyhow. But um, that's about all. I I really would like this revisited and I'd like to look at that E and D a little bit more. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, June. Um. Jessica?
I agree with Randy in June and I also agree with June on looking to see if we can use more of that E and D.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, Randy? And then I'm going to go.
I I just wanted to formally make a motion um, on the table to postpone um. Voting on the budget until next week um, and pushing it to the policy, oh, sorry, the finance subcommittee uh, to relook at it.
Second.
I I don't know if that's a valid motion. There's a motion on the floor to approve the budget so we could um. Take no action on that motion. Uh, we could table that motion. Um, but unless you're going to amend that motion, I don't think you could introduce a new one just yet.
Susan's holding up Robert's rules.
Okay.
Um. I believe a valid motion is postponed to a certain time.
Yep, or table or take no action.
Motion to and then. You say what the motion is, hold off on the decision until later, basically, and you can specific that later time where if you table it, it's indefinite. It's the battle of the Roberts rules. Yeah, I was over here. The camera went off and I was.
We can uh. Table or take no action, I believe are the two. Uh, but I'd like to have the discussion continue for a bit before we. Decide to end that discussion.
Right, but if there is a motion on the table and there's a second, so we have to vote on that.
I don't think that was a valid motion is what I'm saying.
I beg to differ.
What, Randy, what was the motion?
I I I made a motion to postpone uh, voting on the budget till next week.
Right. So do we want to? Table the motion?
No, it's, it's postponed to a certain time.
All right. Postponed to next week?
Yes, we would have to have.
This vote until.
All right.
And you, you can postpone indefinitely or you can postpone definitely. And she made it definitely by giving a date.
All right. So any debate on that, which means we cannot talk about the budget?
So we're just discussing postpone the mo- the vote or not?
Correct.
I didn't, I I guess I I didn't want to cut off the discussion tonight, just kind of. You know, get, get everything, all the issues out there and then postpone the vote. So I apologize for making the motion too early.
Superintendent, do you have a comment on the? Superintendent, do you have a comment on the motion to postpone? We can't hear you. Still can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, I don't know if I if I'm able to do this or not, but just wanted to put it out there that. If we do postpone it to next week, it's highly unlikely that the administrative team will be ready. So we would likely need to postpone it until the twenty first of March.
Is that enough time to hit the forty five days before town meeting?
I'm not sure.
I think Townsend has the first town meeting, uh, but. I don't think that Townsend's voted on. I think that's the intention.
The Board of Selectmen have not yet voted in Townsend to set the town meeting for May third yet, but that's the day it's supposed to be.
I think that it works, the twenty first would work for the number of is just if I if I'm doing it correctly. But no, not much room for. Error.
We still have the opportunity to. If we voted. Yes.
If we voted yes, then we're done. If we vote no, then we can move to. Uh, so then we're back to the main motion and we can move to reconsider this motion at a later time in this meeting.
I guess, guess what I was saying? If in a week or two weeks or whatever it's decided, if we vote yes. We still have the opportunity in the future to vote a lower budget. We just can't vote a higher budget.
Correct. We can do that. We can change funding sources. We can do all that, but that final number can't go up.
Right. So at least, I mean, the frustrating thing, right? Oh. This doesn't really fall under. Yeah, Cona does, because it's all about timing. Um. It's this, we're kind of at the mercy of the state. If the state increases the budget even further, then we're in a better position. If they decrease the budget, then we're in a very difficult position. But then it rolls down to the towns, right? They need a firm decision from us so they can make their decisions. Um, but they also have funding from the state, which affects their budget. That usual process. And then the state doesn't actually give us a budget until the the school year is about to start, so. Don't get me started on that.
All right. Any other comments on? Postponing the motion?
So I guess what I haven't read yet is can we still? Discuss the budget if we decide to postpone. We just voted to postpone the vote, not the discussion. Or is that this and discussion? And that's what I was trying to look for here.
Well, technically you can only discuss a motion. Right?
But if we postpone the vote, can we still discuss the original motion just for conversation on where people are and ideas regarding the budget?
Um, I don't believe so, but I've been wrong before in this meeting, so let me double check.
Yeah, that's where I am trying to read through the book here real quick.
There was only a little dust on my book, so I'm a little disappointed in myself.
What should the chair do if a member calls for the orders, David?
So Craig, while while Susan's looking, um, then forty five days would have to be the end of the week of that. May seventeenth, eighteenth timeframe.
What was that day? April, you said?
No, no, I'm I'm saying that twenty first would be late. It would be the end of the week before that.
Oh, okay.
With May third is the first, um. The first town meeting, right? Presumably.
Yeah.
So there's only. Ten days in March, if we do it on the twenty first. For thirty days in April and then two days and three days in May. It's tight. You'd probably want to do, you'd want to vote like the seventeenth or something like that. Sixteen, maybe even just to be safe.
And we can, we can lower. We can lower amounts up to the floor at town meeting, correct?
You can.
Oh, boy. Roberts rules.
That says if you, the the. Postpone to a certain time, uh, if adopted, puts off further consideration of the main motion to a later time.
And that that kind of doesn't uh accomplish anything that I was trying to do, uh, because we certainly want everyone's feedback, uh, coming back to the finance. Uh, committee as we look at this. So, sorry about that.
No worries. We all learned something.
I I think we could vote the motion down, finish the conversation and then.
Yes.
Make a similar motion if we didn't want to vote tonight.
Correct. Or just move to reconsider it. Absolutely. Are we ready to vote then on that and trust that people will vote it down so we can keep talking?
Well, does anyone have anything else to say? It's just a yes or no question, not say it.
All right. Seeing no more discussion. I will recommend we not pass this motion. Um, so a no vote would allow us to continue discussion and not postpone consideration. A yes vote will postpone consideration of the main motion until our next meeting. Jess?
No.
June?
Um, no to continue discussion.
Please.
That's okay.
No.
Uh, Randy?
No.
Susan?
A no vote allows us. A no vote allows us to continue discussion on the main motion.
Correct.
Okay, so no.
No.
Then I'll vote no, so that is unanimous. Um, so we are back to the main motion, which is to consider the budget. The only thing I'll say is, won't be the only thing, but one of the things I'll say is, we were in the situation last year. Townsend approached us um. Pretty emphatically about using more E and D to help overcome their budget woes of last year. Um, we we warned them that doing so would cause problems the next year, which is this year. And here we are. Um, we can't keep using E and D. Um. I know there's a perception that it's just extra money floating around that we can use whenever we want, and that's not the case. It it has to be budgeted as a funding source. It is also our only fund right now. Um. If something were to happen, um, we would still have to go to the towns to use it. Because we just were able to start a stabilization fund last year and we have, I believe, a zero dollar balance in our current stabilization fund. So if we use E and D, uh, and the unexpected happens, we're not like the towns who are carrying five, six plus percent of their budget in free cash. Uh, we would have. Less than two percent. If we keep using E and D this year, and it will make things significantly worse next year. I've I've told the towns this, I think every year, it's we don't have a an expense problem. We have an income problem. Um, and we continue to have an income problem. And it's it it's catching up to us and and I'd be fine using a little more E and D. Um. But it's not going to be enough to satisfy the towns. I mean, Ashby's getting crushed this year. Um. And I think Townsend and Pepper, both of whom I've asked for copies of their budget and have yet to receive that. Um, I don't know what their target number is, and um, they want us to use more E and D, but. It hasn't been an open two-way discussion in terms of where we have to meet. Um, so that's been a little frustrating. I don't have an answer. Um, but I think, as actually our first public speaker said, um. We've got to invest in the kids of this community. They're the ones that are going to get out of this mess, get us out of this mess in the future, because. We haven't figured it out yet. And I think it's time that we. Again, put the put the services that are needed for our students. And we've got to find a way to sustain that long term. And right now, we're not doing that by using E and D. Um, and continuing to cut back to the point where we're not providing the services needed. So, uh. I'll leave it at that for now, but it's it's something where we've got to get folks to the table. To have an open dialogue around what's important to the communities. I think we've heard a lot from um town officials. Um, but. The community members that I've spoken with have have been supportive of the schools and the budget, so I I'm not sure where that disconnect lies, but. That's all. Anybody else? Everybody wanted to keep talking about the budget. Who's next? June?
Uh, just a little side note that um our town administrator in Ashby started about two weeks ago. Um, and when I spoke to her earlier, she is working with the accountant, trying to really get a grasp on the town budget. To get a number back to me. So it's not that that question is being ignored. It's that. It's a, she's diving in headfirst um into this right now and um. Should have an answer from Ashby soon, so just so you know.
Thank you. Um, one other data point, just for those that are aware, and and Miss Haynes was nice enough to put this together. Um. When we look at E and D and where it comes from. And Nancy, correct me if I'm reading this backwards, but I think I have it right, that the the revenue um that came in over budget. Is is over one point one million of of last year's E and D. Um. So again, that's that's money that we we didn't expect to get and we got. Not a guarantee. Um, and on the flip side, there are um unspent items. Um, that was the remainder, I believe, without balance. And those, again, are may not be things that are going to repeat themselves, so. If. Again, we don't need a bus route that we thought we needed and transportation comes a lower. If we don't purchase as many classroom supplies as we thought, if. Um, other expenses just just go lower than we than we expected them to be. They're all unknowns. Um, so again, I'd I'd be a little cautious on putting E and D too too far down. A, because it's not guaranteed to be there next year. But again, we can't plan for these uncertainties if we don't have the funds to do so. And I don't know if anybody else has. A feeling on how much E and D. I know Pepper will throw out a number of six hundred thousand. I don't know if other folks feel differently or or otherwise, but um. If anyone has ideas, I'd be open to hear those. Uh, Nancy, hands?
Sure. Um, so I understand the pressure to and and the ease it is just to plug it with the E and D uh funds that are there and. Um, uh, like Craig said, I I think, you know, perhaps some additional E and D could be utilized. What's going to happen next year if that money is not there? It's going to feel like we lost a revenue source. So if we get the same thirty dollars per student from the state, which is what we're we're projected to get now. Um, next year, which is about, you know, between eighty and ninety thousand dollars. If that happens again, which it will, um, then and we we and we have to reduce the E and D, the assessments will be higher right out of the gate. Just starting out, well, you know, no, no other changes. So it's just like losing. If if the state cut our cut our revenue source next year. So we're we're setting ourselves up um for that. I understand the pressure on it. Um, I just, it's like now or later kind of decisions. So maybe a combination of things is the right approach this year. Um, it's also, you know, the one of the, I know I've said this before, but it's one of the things that the. Um, when when we go borrow, when we go out to borrow, that the investor services ask us, you know, what are your, what are your funds that are available? How much are you using to support your budget? What other funds do you have? Um, so those questions get asked every year as we go out to borrow. Um, and that affects. Um, how much the interest costs are for the borrowing. So anyway, I do, those are just my two cents. I think most of you've heard me say those things before. I just wanted to add.
Thank you, Nancy. Randy?
Not to keep reiterating, but I just wanted to let everybody know that I also am in agreement. Uh, using the two million dollars to be in D is not something I'm comfortable with year after year, because. We don't know when it's going to dry up. We don't know when that's going to end. And um. I'd really like to get out of this loop of using E and D. We need it for. Emergencies, and that's what it's supposed to be there for, not for lowering the budget. So. Um, I'm hoping we can work our way out of using the E and D and getting to a budget that is just supported uh through the normal. Means of uh revenue, the state, the towns, um. And other grants and such, um, and not using our E and D again, because there was a time when we didn't use that much. We only used it for one-time costs. Um, when we needed to.
No. Again, just another data point in front of them. Love Nancy, keep me honest again, but um for FY twenty one. Just over one point two five million um in the unspent uh. Budget um was from busing, utility or other expense utilities and uh insurance benefits, so. Again, those aren't. Things that tend to repeat themselves, although those have been kind of high the last couple of years, but they seem to have fluctuated quite a bit.
And I think you're seeing some of the, some of the closeouts are related to, certainly related to COVID, no question about it, for FY twenty and FY twenty one. Things that occurred going remote. Um, that I know that the police staff worked really hard to keep the buildings. As efficient as possible during those times so that we weren't spending too much on electricity and those types of things. We also have added some. Um, off-site utility, um, solar contracts, and we've added solar panels to Varnum Brook. So over time, we've been able to reduce uh utilities. Um, in those years, we rolled some some out. Um, and that's that's that contributes to the E and D number as well. So there's been some, probably some unusual, uh, unusual couple of years. Um, we can't necessarily assume. Um, the other interesting, I guess, fact for here for that we're planning, it's only uh two retirees so far that I've heard. Um, which is a low number for us. I think we usually have somewhere between ten and twelve, somewhere in that range. Um, so no retirees coming. Um, that often helps offset, so I can't, I can't count on that this year. Um, so something to think about perhaps next year, being um more of a wave of that. It's it's not something that we can. Um, necessarily predict. People continue to work and some people retire. It's just, it's the way it goes, but um. That's just an interesting fact I thought I'd throw up there.
Not, I guess, to belabor my uh income problem comment, but. With the with the budget up two point. Well, it's under two point five percent, so two point three eight, I think it was, Nancy, three six.
Three eight.
Great, thank you. Um. The fact that, again, we're below the two point five and the towns have new growth and it's still an issue. I think it it just reinforces the fact that. There are, there are income issues, whether that's state aid, transportation aid, uh, et cetera, that there's. There's things that we need to do that that we're doing. And we've, I think, again, joined with folks from the various towns who are helping us fight the fight. At the state level to get. at the state level to get some funding, additional funding or, or changes to how the transportation works, things like that. And I, and I think again, we just seem to continue to get support to push in the right areas to, to get us the assistance as, as a district. Getting the minimum increase allowed of $30 per student as discussed, right, is just not, not doing us a lot of, of help where we need it. Susan?
Um, just wanted to point out or remind, depending on how aware of it you are, but Friday this week, MARS, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools is having a legislative event on Friday at like 8:45 ish in the morning. So an opportunity to speak, speak with our elected officials at the state level about the challenges we're having and to lobby for funding to help them understand our issues. So not only school committee, but town officials, if you're on the line to attend that. And you can reach out to the central offices and they can give you information participating in that. I assume that that's not just directed at school personnel. Others from the towns could attend. Because we're not just trying to protect schools in our discussion of E and D. We're also trying to protect the towns. We can apply some E and D to the budget, you know, a small amount each year to help cover any surprises. Then that impacts the assessments. Two million's too high, but there is a smaller amount that I think makes sense to be contingency for the unexpected. So running out, not always a problem for the, the district maintaining services, but it's a tough problem for the town maintaining services. I think everybody here lives in the towns. So town services are important. They're important to us as individuals. They're important to the schools. The schools need town services to continue to have a safe environment. So you have water. I think that's a little bit different, the water, but everyone thinks public safety. But there's other services the towns provide that school benefits from. And the students, when I say schools, it's all about students.
So 3,000 citizens who don't get a vote, right? That's who we're representing. The other update too, so for those that were on the joint meeting with, with the town boards, so last week, I believe, might have been the week before. So I, I know a number of town officials have been communicating with representatives, state representatives, senators, et cetera. So that work is, is ongoing. There sounds like there's a high degree of confidence that at least some of the transportation reimbursement may come in a little higher than, than is in our current budget numbers. And there's other, other means that folks are advocating for some support. So there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes. That again, town boards, between the select boards, the finance committees, town administrators, superintendent, admin team here and, and school committee reps have all been in one, one form or fashion, pursuing other alternatives to help us get more assistance from the state level. So that's where we're also pursuing things. So folks are aware of that. All right. Anyone else on the committee questions?
Yeah, I think the idea behind. I think we'd like, at least I would like more information before making a vote and we still have time. The finance committee has the opportunity to meet again. I think that was the reason for postponing the vote.
I mean, I think that was the reason I, and I, I mean, I can give my opinion, but I know we've been through this numerous times and at least I, your point, you speak to it as chair of the finance committee, but I, I know we've we've gone through this and have, have, I think, cut and further justified why what's being asked for is needed. But I mean, if we want to delay, we send it back to finance. They'll have to meet essentially this week. So we can meet again next week. To vote as if the committee is able to do that. Then we can certainly do that. The other thing, I guess, and, and if this is going to go back to the finance subcommittee, that if additional E and D is used, I would first ask for commitment from the towns to provide a plan to overcome the gap that we're going to create, which will be wider than the gap this year. Whether that's a non-binding vote from each select board or something more firm, but they've got to commit soon to providing us a plan on how they're going to address the issue because it's going to be worse next year. And we keep kicking the can down the road and then they keep blaming us the next year and it just, that's not sustainable.
I do believe that we are tight on time wise for everyone here. Just, but there's time to work on lowering it. If we have a starting point, if that makes sense. I mean, Brad and Nancy have gone through the budget and, you know, they've done their due diligence and they brought us a great budget. And I know that Craig and I, and I know that June has been in conversations with them about where we can do things, what we can do and Randy as well. I mean, I'm fine with bringing it back to finance, but we do have to make like a lot of decisions within the next week. And if it's the same thing, we're just bringing forward next week. I don't know if it's bringing us where we want to be. Because the towns will have to answer back to us, but does this, does a week and a half give them enough time to give us any answers? If that makes sense. I think Susan wants to go. Okay, go Susan.
I came into this meeting thinking, wow, we shouldn't vote tonight. We should wait. I think because we can increase E and D from now until I think the end of this fiscal year. And we can lower the budget. Now, if we were sitting here grappling with increasing the budget, there's definitely a benefit to, you know, weighing that out and understanding it better because once we vote a number, we can't go up. But I don't think anybody's in a position of thinking we would go through more analysis and increase the budget. Because we're already at 2.38, which is below two and a half. And, you know, unfortunately, if the state was giving us two and a half more each year, I think that would be a doable, palatable number. So we've got that problem. It is nice. We've kind of talked in generalities. If the town knows worst-case scenario from us, at least they can start doing analysis and preparing for that. So I'm inclined to say we voted tonight, but we still if we can get more information from the towns, if we can do anything more in the finance subcommittee, look at it certain, whether it's revenue or expense, a different angle than we've looked at before, that's all good. And I don't think we should stop. If we vote tonight, yes, on what was presented. We shouldn't stop trying to lessen the burden on the towns while also being fiscally responsible with our reserves. So like I said, I am up for a counterargument there, but I was coming into this meeting saying, don't vote tonight because I wasn't ready. Probably because it's the first year I've not been on the finance subcommittee. So I didn't have all the nitty-gritty all along. But I don't know what the downside is to voting tonight. But if someone can think of it, I'd love to understand that better.
So just a June, before you go, if you don't mind, just a clarification. So there's a couple different I'll say pathways and, and there's some new, so just to clarify, so we can lower the budget, which is taking us from the 2.38 to a lower number, which means cutting something that's in the proposed pool of spending. So taking us from the 53 million down to something below that. We can change the, the revenue source, meaning add more E and D, which does not change the budget number, but lowers the responsibilities of the towns. Or you can do a combination of the two and cut the budget and increase E and D, which would then further reduce the responsibilities of the town. So just want to be clear that there's, there's the budget and then there's the funding sources for the budget and those are separate but connected things. June and then Tom.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out that again, all three towns did send us letters asking us to use more E and D. So, and they know, they understand how it works and they're still asking for this. I think they are optimistic that working together, they could maybe get some more state funding for us for next year even. I, I think there's some good things, you know, coming down the pipeline as far as that goes. And perhaps maybe that's why they're, they're, you know, more ready to use that, have us dip into it this year, but they do understand the consequences of that. And they're still asking for it anyway, for us to, to look at that. And I think, you know, without using, I, I think a combination would be good. I don't want to see drastic cuts. And I don't want to see us wipe out our E and D. But if the finance subcommittee could reconvene and try to, you know, maybe do some combination of both to help the towns out when they keep asking us so much for help. That, that would be the right thing to do.
Thank you, June. Tom?
Yeah. So for me, I think, you know, I, I hear a 2.38 increase in a budget and I know, you know, I know times are tough. I know, you know, that, that this affects all the towns and I know it affects them differently. It's not just a 2.38 for each of the towns because we're regional, because it, it, the assessments hit differently. If you were to hear from other towns, like a 2.3% increase budget, I mean, I, I, I think that'd be palatable from, from most other towns, you know, even in this circumstance. And so you know, I, I, I know it hits other towns differently. I think, you know, to your point, Craig, I think we have to figure out some, some fundamental issues in terms of how this is going to get paid for. 2.38 to support the students, to support the faculties, to support our staff. I mean, we got to figure this out because it's a really reasonable budget.
Thank you, Tom. Susan?
So as you mentioned, Craig, there are the, the two separate things. What's our budget? How much do we plan to spend? And how much is the district contributing for the revenue? And both of those things affect the town assessments. One advantage to voting tonight is it's a commitment from the committee that we're not going to spend more than 61, you know, million roughly, a little bit more than that. If we, then there's a discussion of do later, if we vote tonight, later the discussion is how much E and D do we want to use to support this? And but I think it's to, to state tonight that we don't plan to spend more than 61,132,959 by voting tonight, we commit to that. Because we can't go higher on the budget. Assessments and revenue are a different discussion. And I believe we have the ability to change revenue past tonight. If we vote, and I think the motion tonight includes how much E and D we're going to contribute. Nancy, are we able to lower how much the E and D we're going to contribute after tonight?
You, you, but, but you'd have to find a way to not affect a member assessments for the towns.
Okay, so.
So if you lowered your E and D but found some state funding, great, that would be fine.
So we, so it's not the budget that we can't increase. It's the assessments that we can't increase. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you can't, you can't increase that, right?
The assessments.
Yep.
Okay, then never mind what I just said. I think. Someone else. Hear me and hear her and come to a different conclusion.
So Nancy, if.
Just a clarification. I think you can actually increase the assessments, but they have to approve. So I don't know under what circumstances that would ever get approved. If maybe there was some emergency, I don't know. I, I've never heard of that happening, but I suppose that could happen. So I think if the member of towns don't approve of an increase to their assessment, then it would, you know, and I believe you, they'd each have to approve that. So anyway, that, in, in, in past times, we just said, can't, you can't increase the assessments. And that's just the way you handle it going forward. So you can't increase the assessments without their approval.
There's some dots I'm not connecting. I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
I think the, the message is if we vote tonight, the, the assessment based on the vote tonight would not go up. It may go down if we find additional funding sources, whether that's from the state or from E and D or a combination of the two. Or cutting the budget or a combination of the three.
So then the only way we could reduce the amount of E and D that we have, we use, is we'd have to reduce the budget by the same amount.
You have to reduce the budget or have funding from another source such as.
Right. If the state came through and sprinkled magic on us and gave us all kinds of money. Then we can reduce the assessments. But the only way if we voted tonight to reduce the assessments is to reduce the budget. We wanted to reduce E and D. You have to reduce the budget equally unless we found revenue from the state. Right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, it's somewhere, I mean, it's just a balance, right? If you reduce E and D by 500,000, you would need income from some other source. If you're not going to change the budget.
But we'd be reducing the budget. So we could commit to not increasing the budget no matter what. Yeah.
Yes.
Keep me honest, Craig.
Well, I think, so by, by voting tonight, I mean, we're, we're voting by voting tonight, I guess, anything could change up until the deadline for the town warrants theoretically. Correct, Nancy? Like, are we bound by the decision tonight until it's filed with the towns?
So if you were to vote a budget tonight, I would send letters to the towns assessing, telling them what their assessment is based on this vote. You could change it and we have done this before, changed it. Ideally, you change it before it goes to print for the warrants. But if, if you didn't do that, you still could do it right up until town meeting, which gets complicated on the floor because their warrant won't match what we're asking for. And also might, there might be some difficulties if The towns have potential issues supporting it. And they have, you know, they have to work out what their budget option A, option B might be. So I can could get a little complicated, but it could be done.
That makes me, go ahead, Susan.
Could we? Reduce the number of factor voting on tonight and at least commit to a. Two point three eight increase in our budget?
I mean, I.
There's a downside to that. No higher than two point three eight percent. But that doesn't really help with the assessments, because we're not committing on our E and D contribution.
Yeah. I mean, I think. Based on Nancy's recent comment. I'm now leaning the other way and what's. What, so we don't notify the towns, we don't trigger any process of of saying that we've approved a certain number. So you know, i- it's tough, because I, if we don't. Put pressure on the towns, then they're not, they're not gonna. It's going to be difficult for them to come to the table, to have the discussion, to get us to where we need to be. So if we delay our vote. Then the towns, we haven't given the towns anything firm, just like they haven't given us anything firm. And then it's going to get to the deadline, we're going to vote and we still may be. Far apart.
I'm giving a smirk because I'm like, if only the state would give all of us something firm, but.
Oh, you know.
I I just wanted to add, you you know, on a certain level, I I agree, we haven't given the towns anything. Anything, you know, definite. But since really the the summit started back in the fall. We've given them a pretty clear picture that really has not changed, and and at this point. I I still in the central office team and for that matter, the school committee does not know what the town's number is. And and what their bottom line is. So it's very difficult to create a budget and and to work with the member communities. When you don't know what their needs are as well. And I I just want to put that out there. Again, I I still feel, you know, we always work on the budget after the budget is adopted by the school committee. Prior to to it going to town meeting. We are not going to have things in the budget that that we don't need, and if we do by chance have to make reductions. We do have time and and I'm not saying that we wait until we get to town meeting floor. I think we do it, as Nancy said. Prior to, you you know, the documents being published for town meeting. So the the there's still time. I I just want, you know, to to put it out there that this this number. You know, we've been saying three point oh six, three point oh six, three point oh six, really for quite some time. And now it's not three point oh six, it's two point three eight. And a again, the the budget summits were not well attended. Again, so it's, this really should not be coming as a surprise. We are trying to be collaborative, we are trying to work with the member towns. But, you know, for really to work, we need information from the towns as well. Not necessarily a narrative, but just, you know, a line item budget with, you know, areas that they want to increase, areas that they're looking to decrease. But also what their bottom line is, what do they need from the school district? And and we don't have that.
Pepperell's town charter requires them to have a budget message by, I believe, the end of January or February first, and I was told that. That's not what they do. So. Figure that one out. Go ahead, Lisa.
I do think that. We, someone has to make the first move, the towns or us. And I think we need a starting point. So I am in favor of us making the first move. And and working with them, because we do need to collaborate with them and come to something. But I think this would give them a starting point to actually truly come to the table and discuss with us. That's all.
Thank you. And I I mean, I agree, I may think that just. We need to start somewhere and I may think we need to continue our work. On the, again, additional funding sources and and where there's opportunity, but we've got to. Always put a stake in the ground so we have something concrete to to talk about. Susan, then June.
Um, yeah, I did have a question. I don't know if. Nancy, this might not be something you have right there in front of you, but just to. Size the problem. To get Ashby down to a five point, five percent increase. How many millions of dollars do we need to cut from our budget? Or hundreds of thousands of dollars? Do you know roughly what that looks like, just so that. Folks listening understand that it's not. Fifty thousand dollars to get Ashby down to five thousand dollars, I mean, five percent increase.
Nancy, I I think I have it from memory. I don't know if if you remember, but you might. I'm happy to say what I think it is, but.
You're on mute, Nancy. Maybe that was just body language, though.
Yeah, go ahead, Brad, that's fine.
If if memory serves me correct, and this doesn't fully answer your question, Susan, but to to get Ashby to. Just north of seven percent, I think we were around a two million dollar reduction.
So if our budget goes down about two million dollars, Ashby is still slightly over seven percent increase.
I I believe that was the number, but again.
Right, that's that order of magnitude.
Right. I I think Nancy's checking that now, but that's based on my memory.
Yeah, that a two million dollar reduction would be, they'd be at five point four two percent.
Okay, so I was off by a bit.
Yeah.
It was one and a half, I think, was the number that put them north of seven.
Yeah, million and a half, let me see.
And that's, it's all about how the regional agreement has us dispersing. The funds.
I mean, that, just to be clear, in in. The five year rolling average doesn't fix the problem for Ashby completely. It it brings them down somewhere north of the nine percent.
Right. And, yeah, I don't think that that fixes it for this year, but I think it makes all the towns aware that anybody could be hit with that and have a huge surprise. So it's to everybody's advantage long term. To not have such a big surprise.
But but again, I think the key is, is that even two million dollars would still put them at just over five and a half percent, which is still high.
Just, just for your, if you're, if you're thinking about it, they're roughly a little over, just over twelve percent, twelve point eight percent of the entire district. So a hundred thousand dollar change is about a twelve thousand dollar change for them. So you can kind of judge it that way.
Right, so, cutting one position from our budget does nothing for Ashby, really.
I assume every little helps.
Well, every little helps.
You're like this, but, but yeah, it's going to be a challenge regardless. This is just, this is a tough situation.
Right, it's not like we can just shift fifty thousand dollars, here you go, Ashby. And it helps fix the problem, I guess was my.
Yeah, I mean, any, any, anything that we would do to correct. Or or to help assessment for Ashby would have helped other two towns as well. And Pepperell, roughly fifty percent, and Townsend roughly thirty eight percent.
Yes, I I don't think Ashby is asking us to go in and make two million in cuts. They're they're aware of that number. Brad and Nancy met with the town administrator and a select board member and. And the former town administrator, interim administrator, and and we have discussed this. They are asking for any help. Not necessarily two million, but to do something. And we did make the first move. We had the hearing, so they saw those numbers. They've asked for help, they've asked for more use of the E and D, because like you said, there's not going to be just. A position we can cut that's going to make a difference. But you would make a difference to all the towns and. And again, Ashby might or should have more firm numbers after this week, after Christine meets with the accountant, but. I I believe it was Pepperell said they were short seven twenty. So we are getting some numbers, they had that in our letter. I don't know if Townsend had a number in their letter. I heard seven hundred thousand is what they're short, but I'm, don't quote me on that. But the, you know, we did make the first move. We put these numbers out to the towns. The towns know what we're looking at. And they have now come back to us and said, please help us do something. And we, we haven't really changed anything in a month. So I think if there's any opportunity for the finance subcommittee to circle back. And whether more use of E and D, whether there's anything else that could be trimmed. Again, I don't, I'm not looking to see massive cuts either. But I think if we can do anything else, now is the time and we should be doing that before we make a final vote on this.
I I just wanted to circle, go back to what I just said. When I was saying that about a cut to our budget and the impact it has on Ashby's. I'm I'm not trying to preach to the officials in the towns about how the budget works. I know they're very aware of that, but just for if any public is listening. So they may not be as involved in those details. I just wanted to clear that up for the public, so. And I also agree that we have made the first mode move and we have shared the details of our plans and the details of our numbers. I think to be collaborative. Needs to be response reciprocated. I didn't have my hand raised.
I guess, question, June, back to you. From an Ashby perspective. I know, I knew you say any, any little bit helps. I I want to make sure that. If we're able to to, again, I'll say find money for lack of a better term, but. I don't, I don't want it to seem disingenuous if we say, oh, we found fifty thousand dollars and here's a, here's a roll of pennies to Ashby. Like, what, is there a number that has been floated or or talked about that that would be? That you would feel is mutually acceptable?
I I think that six hundred thousand of E and D, the the towns all kind of threw that out there. That, you know, if we're not going to get up to two million or even one million, I mean, that's still a good. A good little dent in it, you know, it's something. And it's what they're asking for. Yeah, I I'd say, yeah, between five hundred thousand to a million would have a a good impact on the towns.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? I feel we're. Getting to either. Voting up the number. And having finance subcommittee go take another look and then we reconvene the next week. To do potentially another vote. Or we wait and have the finance. Subcommittee still go off and do some work and meet again to definitely vote. Any preference from folks?
Craig, when is the next school committee meeting set for?
I believe it's the twenty first. Monday, the twenty first, which I think we've determined is just shy of being late for the first town meeting. So we would need a special meeting. I forget who did the count, Nancy, if that was you, said the seventeenth. Would be our last date or.
Was that the last one day?
Yeah, some, somebody wants to double check me, it's forty five, forty five days prior to May third. I mean, Wednesday, eight sixteen, I mean, if something happens, we don't have a quorum.
Depending on how you count the days, the sixteenth or seventeenth would be forty five days from the first.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that we just do Monday, the fourteenth, because Monday seems to work for everybody?
But that may not give us enough time to get information from their numbers at. And so that's why possibly twenty is a good number. Because it gives us at least about two weeks to get some feedback. And I know that we've gotten feedback from the towns, but to really dig, talk to the towns and get a firm number. From them. I mean, we, we only receive these letters Friday and Saturday, is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I was.
Thursday at the earliest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The first one came Thursday.
Yeah. So I think just to get this to the town meeting and make sure that it's on the warrant. I think we'd be safe with the vote tonight and then make the commitment that we will continue to work with the towns. To possibly use more E and D or find that funding source. I think that makes the most sense.
Sorry, Lisa.
Nope, I'm done.
I was just going to ask, is there a way to articulate that in the notification to the towns about the assessed amounts? Can we, can we say that we have? Here's what the committee has voted with the commitment to continue to have open discussions with the towns and. Refine these amounts? And does that then take pressure off us to hit a March seventeenth deadline? It's a two part question.
Oh, yeah, I think you could certainly. Include some kind of a email. I usually send it ahead of time, you know, as soon as I have the assessment letters ready, I send an email, so. We could include whatever language you saw, thought was important to send off with that, that's not a problem, and you would meet the deadline for the forty five days.
What's the the math on that? Like, if we voted tonight. We can. Lower the budget. And or we could add more E and D. Which are two things that the town would appreciate, the town would appreciate. But we can't lower E and D and increase the budget. Someone else needs to check my logic. I still don't see the harm in voting tonight with the commitment to continue our analysis. Unless we hope to use less E and D than we already have in this motion.
I I don't think there's any harm. I I don't want to send the wrong message to the towns, I guess, is my only concern. Like, I don't. From the outside looking in. I I would not want this vote to appear. That, from a town perspective. We, we wrote this letter, we asked for these concessions, we. Asked the committee to to do anything they could to help us out. And they turned their nose at us and said, nope, and they voted anyway. I want it to be clear that there is still a commitment to pursue everything we've talked about tonight. E and D, cuts to the budget, state funding, et cetera, et cetera. We we absolutely commit to doing that. I think everybody here agrees to that. So I want, as long as that message is loud and clear. And for those watching the replay, you can hit the skip back fifteen seconds and hear it again. Absolutely, I think we have to do that, we and we we, as long as that message is clear, then I'm comfortable voting. If there's any doubt in anybody's mind and and then let's not vote. And just and just wait, and that just puts more pressure on us to get these meetings in on time. So there's, there's an inconvenience factor, but. As long as, again, as long as that message is heard, that we hear you, but. This is more procedural vote to get a number, a starting point, and let's have these conversations and crunch the numbers over the next couple of weeks.
So it's our commitment that it's not gonna, your your assessment's not going to go any higher than this.
Yeah, I've not heard anybody on this call say we're not spending enough money, so I think. Through through that, I think we're pretty confident that it's not going to go up even a penny. through, through that, I think we're pretty confident that it's not going to go up, um, even a penny.
And I don't think we are looking at something that could shift some of Ashby's burden to the other two towns.
I don't think that's. No, I, I mean, I think there's, I don't even think there's a mechanism to do that, that, that the only, the only option would be either to raise everybody or lower everybody. I don't think there's an option that decreases Ashby per- percentage wise, i- in a different proportion, or per sort, proportionally wise, differently than the other towns. That if we lowered the budget or we increased revenue by a hundred thousand dollars, it's going to affect everybody just at a different rate.
Well, I think there is a mechanism, but we, I don't think we can get it through in time, which is the five-year rolling average.
Yes.
But would help Ashby this year and would help other towns and other years if they saw a similar dramatic bump. It's all about pulling the risk, which is an advantage of being in a region.
June, your, your hand back up or is it still up?
Uh, no, I, yeah, I do have it back up. I, I was just gonna say, if we are voting tonight, I cannot support the budget as it is because it, I really don't think we took in balanced feedback. Um, even if we promised to look at it later or whatever. And I think that's is how it comes off. Like, oh yeah, I, I promise I'll circle back. And when you hear that, you don't really know. You know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't feel good about it, but.
Right, then I'll, I'll make it. Does somebody want to move to reconsider the previous motion to postpone our, um, I forgot what the exact wording was, Randy, but postpone our vote on the budget till our next meeting.
Just make a different, Randy said till next week. You could make a motion that said till the fourteenth. I don't know.
Well, I don't, we haven't started meeting yet, but.
I, I just wanted to add again, we may not have the time to get the information that we need for Monday. And, and I still think that we need information from the towns is to what their number, um, what they'd like to see the number be. Um, and, you know, a- again, I think s- some of this involves me meeting with building administrators, district administrators, the finance committee. And w- we don't have a tremendous amount of time to make that happen. A finance committee meeting, uh, in addition, we, we need forty-eight hours to post the finance committee meeting, which at this point could probably be done on Thursday. Just to, just to the posting, so. Just putting that out there, but there's, it's very, it's gonna be very hard to meet unless we really need to know where the towns need us to come in at. I know the towns want us to use more E and D, but it would be helpful to know wh- what their bottom line is, so to speak.
I don't know if there's a vote we can make or an amendment to this one.
So I really don't think that you're gonna get anything from the towns, cause Craig and I have both asked Townsend and Pepperell for these things and we still have yet to receive them. So don't count on the town, my opinion.
I share that frustration.
And I, I recognize the forty-five day limit. I, I think the proper way to vote is to, the way this motion was written, but I would love to, you know, make some sort of motion that says, you know, Ashby's um, assessment will not exceed four hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Towns and Pepperells, um, but will continue to review opportunities to lower the assessments. You know, but that's not the kind of vote we read night, need right now, but that would be clear that we're, something that says we're making a commitment that won't exceed these numbers. But, and we'll continue to look at it, but that's not how, that's not how the motions work. Then maybe what we do is we vote on the budget or make an amendment to the budget that in addition to all these numbers, we send a email, a letter to the towns explaining that your assessment will not increase beyond that because we're continuing to, you know, review.
We could do that. I mean, we can, whether it's, um, Lisa as the finance subcommittee chair or myself, uh, the committee could have one of us basically write a letter to the three towns in response to their letter. Um, and say that while we did vote a budget in at these amounts that Nancy will notify them about. We're committed to continuing to work to reduce the impact of the assessments. Um, we could even put in there some of the options we're considering, but in order for us to proceed, we need copies of your draft budgets and, and the target number that is realistic, um, that you'd like us to hit, and that gives us something to talk towards. Cause right now, I mean, we could come up with something that again, is, is a number we think is good and, and we could be wilder off. I never would have, I never would have gone as high as five to six hundred thousand of, of more E and D yet. Um, that's, again, from June's perspective, that's what Ashby would like to see. That wouldn't have been my guess. So without some concrete information from the other two towns. Like I, I just, I'm kind of just shooting in the dark a bit and that is frustrating.
And the letter could say, like, one of the reasons we, there's two reasons we voted this budget at this time. And one of them is to make sure we hit the forty-five day notice. And another to make a commitment to you that your assessment will not exceed this amount. But doesn't mean we're gonna stop working.
Right.
But I agree, we need some way of clarifying our intentions. It wasn't like, yeah, whatever.
Right.
Now, we ignored it. We did what we wanted, cause that's not what's happening.
Um, again, just wanted to add, um, you know, I, I can't say it's happened every year, but I, I would say it's happened most year that we have in fact cut the budget after the budget was approved by the school committee prior to it going to the town. So this is something that we do do, um, on a regular basis. Uh, so I, I would, again, just want to put that out there. It's not, we, we don't stop working on the budget after the budget has been passed by the school committee. We always work to make sure, um, that we're asking for what we need. Um, and if there's something that we don't need, then we will remove it from the budget, whether it's been voted on or not. Um, so just, just putting that out there. And then also, is there a possibility to vote in E and D number with the warning not to exceed? Um, so that w- we have the flexibility of adding what the towns have asked for, but we're not bound by it. And we can go back to the amount we used. The amount we're actually recommending in this budget that we use, but give us the flexibility to use what the towns are asking for. That's an answer. That's a question I don't know the answer to.
Budget not to exceed sixty-one million, et cetera, et cetera, and E and D not no, at a minimum.
Not to exceed and adds, not to exceed and add the, add what the towns have wanted to, but it doesn't lock us in. To using it if we don't have to. That, I don't know the answer to that question. I just don't, I, I mean, the, the other piece is, is that, again, I would say I heard it earlier tonight that, uh, the, the, the district made the initial move by having the hearing. I would contend that we made our first move by having the budget summits. Um, this, our number has not changed since January, except going down. It's gone down. Um, from three point oh six to the two point three eight, which is at right now. So i- if we're gonna continue, i- if the towns really want us to do a deeper dive into this, maybe the towns can look at delaying their town meeting by a week. It doesn't sound like Townsend has set their date. Um, it looks like that's the date that we're having, having trouble with. So that we can meet on the twenty-first, if the committee's not willing to vote on this tonight, which I still think is a very good budget. Um, and we can still do work on it between now and, and anything being published for town meeting, potentially doing what the towns want us to do. But would there be a consideration for the towns to delay their town meetings by a week or two? If we're being asked, and I, I only ask that because we just got this information Thursday. This is, this date has been in the calendar for a year. Um, and this budget information has been out there since January. We got the information Thursday. And we are up against it now. And I think, you know, we don't have numbers still. And we're being asked to make additional reductions, which is fine, or to find money from other sources. But we, we still don't have a full picture on our end.
I just wanted to clarify what I had said that, um, uh, uh, regarding the E and D and that six hundred, that six hundred didn't come from Ashby. That was in the letter from Pepperell. Um, that's where that number came from, but it, it would be beneficial to any of the towns. I don't have an exact number from Ashby, but they did ask for an increased use of E and D. Um, the six hundred, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I appreciate that, June. Thank you. Randy?
Yeah, um, this is getting very complicated and I didn't mean to bring up something to make it complicated by suggesting putting off, uh, certifying a budget. My feeling as far as if we certify tonight, the message that goes to the town, I think a simple letter, just basically stating that due to time constraints, we need to certify something. We're gonna continue to work on this would suffice. I don't think we, um, should limit anything um, and take anything off the table by having a not to exceed number for the E and D or not to exceed anything by certifying anything tonight. We have the cap of the assessments to the towns. They cannot go up one way or the other. Um, anything else that we bring forward from here on out is what we choose to. I wouldn't want to handcuff us ahead of time and not knowing any of the information. So I, if we were gonna vote, I would just go straight vote what we already have on the table. Um, listening to all the constraints of getting another meeting together with valuable information uh, in time to, for the forty-five days before the towns, I'm starting to lean towards, let's vote this in. I think it's more than, um, known here from our conversations that a lot of us are not happy, um, with the budget as far as, um, the towns, um, response to us and we want to try and do more. Um, but kind of take the pressure off trying to put everything together in a week might help us actually get better information together to make a, a better decision if we can take maybe two weeks. Um, or three weeks to gather everything that we need. So I'm kind of starting to lean towards just vote this in as a max. Um, and then go from there.
And, um, I would think if we were going to do a letter, it would be a vote after this vote. With just kind of the parameters of what we're trying to communicate. And of course, the administration would draft it and would, would just be a vote to direct that a letter would be sent, but it would be a separate, I don't think we'd amend this vote. It would be a separate vote after this. Cause. It's, it's not on the agenda, but we didn't foresee, we were gonna send a letter until this discussion.
No, I mean, so I mean, the, the towns wrote me a letter directly, um. So you can either direct me to respond to that or have the administration add to the notification of the assessments that we can do that as a separate vote. I think that's appropriate, given where we're at. Any?
Oh, I'm sorry, Craig.
Sorry, what was your question?
Does anyone have concerns with, um, assuming we're gonna do a letter? Of course, that vote hasn't happened. Sorry. Um, is there any major concerns with voting this in tonight? That hasn't been expressed. I mean, I think it makes sense too, just from logistics and timing. We do this every year. We know we can also have the opportunity to lower if we get more money from the state.
And Nancy, just a question, I guess. So the transportation assessment in the current state draft was seventy-five percent? And you calculated eighty-five? And then I'm hearing rumors of potentially ninety-five. Is this true?
That sounds right.
Okay. So there's, there's potential relief. Do you know what that potential gap would be dollar-wise? And, and I, and maybe just more. And that, that affects the assessments in the same percentage, does it not? Or is transportation slightly different?
Cause the more revenue, doesn't have to come just from E and D. There's a lot of, not a lot, but there are opportunities for more revenue from other places.
Are you, are you hearing ninety or, or?
That somebody in one of the various emails from, I don't know if it was, uh, Ms. Scarsdale or someone else, I think it in one of the conversations that she had heard or been a part of, it might've been actually from the Ashby TA, I think, or somebody had it as ninety-five.
Yeah, I heard ninety.
It would be somewhere in the sixty, sixty thousand dollar change.
Okay. So not huge, but.
Maybe a little more. I did not quick, quick math there, but.
I think, I think it was coming from Senator Kennedy's office.
Right.
And that happens, it goes through the Senate and the House process and they make changes. The other, the only other thing I heard, um, potentially is that some of the inflation factors they're using in the, in the formula, um, the governor's budget capped those. Um, and there's discussions about increasing those. So that would also affect things, probably not in a good way. Um, again, the recommendation would be not to, to not over, over be too overzealous until all those numbers come in, but but, you know, you know, we won't get them for probably in time. I'm not sure what their schedule is right now, but I don't know, Brad, if you've heard, if you've heard anything about any, the next revision coming out.
I have not.
Okay.
All right. Susan, and then I'd like to move on if people are comfortable.
I was just gonna say, which is another reason not to throw all our E and D, because if we suddenly lose funding from the state through this legislative process, we need to get the revenue from somewhere.
All right, are we? I will give a call for any last comments, um, and then unless there is a motion, I will call to vote on the open motion that's on the table.
Which is the numbers and the budget?
The numbers in the budget in the agenda as, uh, I guess I was presenting. And then if that motion proceeds and passes, we will, um, quickly discuss the parameters of a letter, who will write that, and if we need to vote on that, we'll do that quickly. All right, going once. Okay, so the motion on the table as presented in the agenda is to have the school committee adopt an operational budget for FY twenty-three of fifty-three million, two hundred nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. FY twenty-three transportation budget of three million, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. Uh, debt service, three million, nine hundred forty thousand, nine hundred forty thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars. Um, and then use two million, forty-five thousand from E and D.
Then start at the bottom of the list and go up this time?
We could absolutely do that. Um, so I will still vote last. Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
No.
Jess?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is six to one, I'm counting right.
That's what I got.
All right. So, um, to ensure that this is not misconstrued or ill-conceived, so, uh, mispresented to the towns, um, I'd recommend that we provide a, a letter, um, that accompanies this notification of, of the assessments. And, and, and I guess I would recommend that that be provided probably through the administration as all in one. So it's not, they get a letter that says our budget's fifty-three million and then a separate letter that gets lost in the mail. Um, folks agree with that? And if so, any particular boundaries you want to put around that?
Due to kind of time constraints and to offer at least a starting point, um, we commit to continuing to u- understand, um, expense, both revenue and expenses to, um, you know, lower the assessment if possible to, to lower the impact of the assessment, to lower the assessment. And, um, we would like to have ongoing discussions regarding the town's budget. Is that the right way to say it? And we would like to have ongoing discussions regarding the town's budget. Is that the right way to say it? Two topics. We're gonna continue to work. This was just a starting point. Due to time constraints. I don't know how to word the half about. You brought up Craig, I think most. You had the work a good wording on continuing the process of the town to understand their budgets.
Well, yeah, and I I think it's important that that. Our ask of them, and they they wrote us a letter asking some things. I think our ask back to them is. Draft budgets, whatever state they're in, share them. Even if they're not complete, even if your DPW hasn't turned in their budget request yet, like show us what you have. Because we can always look at last year and make some assumptions based on that. And then. Come to the table, like give us a number, give us a target. Like, help us help you in the sense that if if you're looking for. A million dollar change in our in the assessment as a whole. Then we can have some honest conversations that A, that's not likely to happen, but more importantly, where can we meet in the middle? That's gonna be acceptable.
We want to give them a no greater than number for their assessments. But we're gonna continue to find ways to lessen the impact.
Right, yep.
Due to time constraints, like all those thoughts. I don't know how you put that to a motion.
I don't. Did I defer? I mean, I don't think we need to vote on this necessarily to folks feel otherwise. We just can direct the superintendent to. Include that in the notification or him and his team. Does that make sense?
I guess if anyone's concerned about that, this is the time to speak up. And we change it to a vote.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it it may maybe better just so it's in the minutes that we we vote. So there's a record of that. That may be a way to go.
So we make a motion to have a letter to accompany the assessment notice. Explaining the thought process behind. Our vote.
That works. So I have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jessica. All right. Superintendent, Miss Haynes, are you're comfortable? With an understanding of what's being asked?
Yes.
Yeah, well, and no, no way ignoring what they said. We just need more time to digest it. But we wanted to give them a worst case scenario. Just to have a place for them. Just tossing words out for the letter, Brad. That's all. And I'll try to be quiet.
All right, so the motion is to have. Administration send a letter accompanying the assessments. That basically explains the school committee is committed to. Finding ways to lower the assessments, find alternative funding sources, state AD and D. Budget cuts, et cetera, and that the assessments won't go above where they're at right now.
Nancy, does that? The state drastically cuts our budget. We can't increase. Assessments. That's just how it works.
Meaning use other funding sources. Any funding sources that might be available? But if there was like mid-year state budget cuts that happened rarely, but. If there was, then we would have to make an adjustment somehow.
Okay, just don't want to have our hands tied, but I guess it's just a letter. It's not. Our intentions.
All right.
Oh, we already voted the budget, so.
We already voted the budget, yep. All right, so this is for the latter. Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that's unanimous. Thank you. Next, on the agenda. We have the budget transfer FY twenty two. Well, at least I'd expect you.
Would somebody else read it? Because I had to change devices because I ran out of battery. Sorry.
So there's a someone would move that the school committee approved the transfer of forty five thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars. Out of operations, maintenance, technology. And ninety seven thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars, twenty six cents. Out of instructional support and place twenty nine thousand, five hundred sixty dollars into administration dash legal slash audits slash salary. Ninety thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars, twenty six cents into people services dash nursing services. And twenty two thousand, nine hundred forty five into payment to OOD and assessments dash school committee assessment. For a total of one hundred forty three thousand, one hundred twenty three dollars, twenty six cents.
Second.
Actually, I need to so moved.
Oh, so moved. Okay. I didn't know if you made the motion or okay, so.
Do I have a second? Any questions on this discussion? Lisa, do you want to or or maybe Miss Haynes give just a brief background on this for folks?
Yeah, this is the I I'll take at least for you. This is the first budget transfer FY twenty two. With all the final settled contracts and. Some other things that have come up along the way with the. Legal services, if they're widespread legal, we have an audit. We we've authorized a fraud assessment, which is what's been in our. Our audit for a number of years, so we're moving some money to cover that. And it's school choice assessment. Changes from what our original budget was to include that assessment. The nursing services, I mentioned in the finance subcommittee that I'm hopeful that perhaps I'll end up making a transfer to one of the grants, but I'm. I'm waiting that out, but at the moment, I'm asking for the transfer into people services for those costs. And using the operation maintenance and technology lines and the instructional support areas. To cover those. And this year we did some additional grant funding, so I guess you can think of it as the grants are are paying for some of those items. We're not. Losing anything as a result of the transfer.
Thank you, Nancy. Any questions? All right, this is to approve the budget transfer. Tom?
Yes.
When you're ready, Tom, I'm gonna actually reverse the order again. You'll have to wait till the.
You're messing me up here.
I know, I'm sorry. Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you. It's Susan's fault. She asked me to reverse the orders. Anything else, Lisa, from finance?
No, we are finished for now, but we'll schedule some meetings this week or next week.
Perfect. Thank you. Personnel, Tom, anything?
Nothing.
Excellent. Policy, Randy?
Okay, I got a couple of policies here for. First reading, and then we have one, the E B C F A face coverings. I know we voted and our vote took effect as far as it being optional, but I went back into the policy. And I modified it to say that masks in general are. Optional, but wanted to make sure that we documented right now. One that we're following, the Department of Public Health. Requirements and also to document when masks are actually mandatory, which is in all health offices. On day six to ten, when someone is COVID positive or returns to school on day six to ten, when someone is a close contact and returns to school. And then I kind of left everything else in there for information purposes as far as what types of masks and. You know, which ones are better than others and things like that. So this policy I'd like to have for immediate approval. Since we don't have anything in place at the moment that reflects what we've already voted. I hope everyone's had a chance to review this. I did have Catherine Hampson review this and help me with the language, especially on. The situations when masks are required. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. So I guess I can I'll make the motion to approve E B C F A for immediate approval.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? All right, this is for policy E. Sorry, I just lost it. E B C F A for immediate adoption. Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is unanimous.
And then we have a couple of policies for first reading. These are policies that we have updated through. The review process as well as some in the financial. Section of D, which we're continuing to overhaul since there were major changes that M A S E have made. So I will move that we approve E B A B pest management. D I E dash one regional school district audits. D J purchasing, D K dash one regional school district payment procedures. And D K C expense expense reimbursements for first reading.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? All right. Seeing none. This is for those. Group of policies first reading. Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
I will vote yes, so those are up for first reading. Anything else, Randy?
That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Any other business from anybody that was not anticipated?
Next time you would pull names out of a hat for voting.
Oh, that'll just mess me up. It's bad enough. I have to read my list. All right, well, I appreciate everybody hanging in there through the discussion. I know it's not not easy. But I I appreciate everybody slogging through it. And and we'll get there. We'll we'll find a way. We always do. That's what 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 makes this a great group, so I appreciate it. Special thanks to Robert and his set of rules this evening came in very handy. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, and Mickey says yes.
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
Take care.